...meeting for December 9th. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Action on the agenda. Mr. Diamond, you know any changes?
No changes to the agenda.
I make the motion we accept the agenda as presented. Second?
Thank you. Motion from Tom, seconded by Rick, to approve the agenda as you see it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Action on the minutes. Those also are in front of you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on November 25th, 2019, as presented.
Second?
Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Diamond, to approve the minutes of our previous meeting. Any questions on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Mr. Pierce, action on the vouchers.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve vouchers totaling $652,706.72, as presented.
Second?
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Karen, to approve the vouchers in the amount he just read. Are there any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The vouchers are approved. Thank you. Public participation. No one signed up. Pass that to Kim, please. Does anyone want to speak but neglected to sign up? If not, we will move on. Student council report. My friends from the high school tell me they've not had a meeting since our most recent one, so... Thanks for coming! Excellent.
They're gonna go to game two.
Yep. Indeed, indeed. Building and department announcements. Do you folks have much to share?
Good evening. Good evening. Is that better?
No.
No? You guys feel fun?
What?
Okay. Well, I'm gonna start. Um, good evening. At Consolidated, we kicked off our winter season with a winter program last Friday for our second and third graders. They did a beautiful job under the direction of Mrs. Stewart. And I just wanna give a shout out. One of our guiding principles is the word "community", and her husband, Al, actually comes and runs all the stuff for our programs every time and volunteers to do that, and I think that's kind of a nice, um, thing, that he gives back to his community and to our school community there at Consolidated. At Harmony, we are excited about an opportunity to learn from each other. We sent a teacher from each grade level to a reading strategies conference in Milwaukee last Friday. They came back very energized and excited to share at our weekly PLC meeting this week, and then also asked if they could have some dedicated time at staff meetings to kind of do some PD or professional development for our teachers. So, excited about the opportunities ahead to learn from each other. And we're in the throes of planning for a lizard blast for the day before our winter break. We try to, that afternoon, do a lot of multi-age activities with the students, doing things with coding and STEM. So, we're excited and looking together to plan that. Quickly, at the 4K program today, we had a make and take, one of our community outreach opportunities. I think it was a great reminder to 4K staff and myself about how important it is to have that, um, community piece, having those parents come in and do activities with the students. And at Milton East, we have our first family math night tomorrow night, so looking forward to that.
All right, at the middle school, a bunch of evening events coming up here on Tuesday, tomorrow already. We have a concert for choir at 7 o'clock in the Performing Arts Center here at the high school. Also, next Tuesday, we have our band concert. Hope to see a good crowd out for that. Student council's been pretty busy. We had had a food drive last week. We sent several pallets of non-perishable food items to the Milton Food Pantry last week, which is awesome. Student council's also sponsoring our second dance of the year, Friday the 13th Dance, so wish us luck with that at the middle school. Lastly, in the area of teaching and learning, with the temperature about to plummet, about 30 degrees tonight, good to be thinking about summer school. Warm thoughts. Sarah and I had our first meeting today, actually, to get the ball rolling on that. I'm gonna kind of please the crowd here with our West audience. Summer school not be at West this year. So, with our facilities, referendum projects going on, we are consolidating to three buildings this year: Northside Middle School and the high school. So, no summer school at West. Have a good night.
For this year.
For this year.
All right, I am very pleased to announce to you, you may remember it a year ago, Don recognized the advanced placement teachers for the inclusion of Milton High School on the API honor roll. Just this last week, the college board announced the 10th annual API honor roll. They named 250 high schools in the entire nation and all of Canada, and Milton High School is included. It's one of 10 Wisconsin high schools included on the API honor roll again this year. Again, that is for inclu-- it's for increasing participation in advanced placement classes. We have to have at least a 6% increase in the number of students who take advanced placement classes and an increase in the percentage of students who are passing these courses. We have over a 70% pass rate. On the nation average, it's just about half of that, or half, about 50%. So, we're very, very proud. We just are able to release that, so we get some out of the press, but congratulations to all the students and also all the advanced placement teachers, and all the teachers preparing the students to get to that.
Just a couple updates from Northside. First, I want to give a shout out to Chief Mark Clark, Officer Schneider. We had our lunch with the cop of standard presentation today. It's a longstanding tradition here at Milton, part of our anti-bullying efforts in the school community, and it's all about what students can do to be upstate and try to end bullying in our schools. So, many thanks to them for that partnership with Milton Police Department. I also wanted to give a shout out to our positive behavior teams. We had our first Hock Huddle for the school year last week. The goal of that activity is to build community in our school and create connections with kids across grade levels. So, each teacher was a coach, and we had a small group of five students from each grade level that engaged in some community building activities to better get to know one another. And lastly, I wanted to cordially invite the board to our EL multicultural event on Friday, celebrating different cultures around the world. So, we have a luncheon at Northside, a longstanding annual tradition, this Friday at 11:30 to 1:00 o'clock at Northside. I'll do the area for that.
Very good. Thank you much, folks. Moving down to our school spotlight. This is our second installment, so we're thrilled tonight to have the folks from West spend some time with us, and I will let Ms. Marcia introduce the folks that came with her and share with us what the good things have in the West.
All right. Well, welcome, and our presentation is not working, so we're just gonna look at the world up there, and it's gonna be fabulous once it comes around, but we have a wonderful showing from our staff here at West, so thank you to everyone who was able to make it tonight with us. And, as part of... The first thing when this slide's actually come up, a little history about West, and the actual site for West is the oldest school site in the Milton area. In 1889, Milton Junction School was there, and it housed first through 12th grades up until the year 1920. And then 1920, another building was built, and so then the Junction School had just grades first through eighth. And that happened until 1960, when there was a single-story addition that was attached to the building. And then in 68, the two-story building that was there was raised, and you have what we still have right now at Milton West. The current building is there from 1968. So, that was any interesting, just the history on our actual land. At West. There was a really cool slide, I promise. All right. Achievement.
Glad I have your... I have it on your phone here. So, one of the things that we really pride ourselves on at West is our dedication to student learning and teaching as a profession. If you walk around the halls at West or go hang out in the teacher lounge, most conversations are either about successes and what we're doing, or problem solving, or further supporting our students. So, we measure ourselves lots of ways, but one way is with those guns and forward. And so I have those results from the 2018-19 school year. So, in ELA, we had 61 students, 61% of our students proficient or advanced. Yes? And that compares to the state as 39% proficient or advanced, so we are above that. And in math, doing a little better. 71% proficient or advanced compared to 50% from the state. And those are increases from the previous year, so kudo, okay?
Not just an increase, but an 11% increase in both math and English and arts from the previous year. And the school population at West, we are a unique building where we are one of the only schools in the district to have the early childhood special education program at our building. There's definitely, we are clear to state, yeah?
Let's take a second to scroll through those initial couple seconds, since we haven't seen...
Yeah, let's go back. All right, and Milton Junction School, that elaborate true story building. And then in 68, the current West that you see there now.
Can I ask a question? I'm just wondering, everybody know, that bell tower right there is still in front of our school.
Oh, when the building was raised, the bell tower from the original was kept, and that's out front still in our building, which was redone and replanted around by an Eagle Scout this year, too. The next slide was our achievement. There you go, compared to the state. And compared to ourselves, that 11% increase from the year before. All right, and our population, we are the only school to have the early childhood three-year-old special education program at West. We are the only school to house a 4K section also. We have pre-kindergarten sections, four first grade sections, four second grade sections, and three third grade sections. So, we are a unique blend at Milton West. And at Milton West, everyone belongs there. And you can see there a different, we have different compilations. We house all of the students who are identified as having an intellectual disability, and that those students come to West. So, you can see up there in the left-hand corners some of the wonderful community projects that our teacher Jenny Schwant does with that program. Up in the top, right-hand corner, showing our three-year-old makeup that we have at West. We are also the school that houses the students who are learning English as a second language, so all of those students from the district come to West. And then in the bottom corner, showing 4K at our school, too, so we are a unique blend at West, and we love every single one of them. Right there in the middle, you can see, that's what you see when you walk in, our front door, painted by our wonderful Allison McDowell there.
Hi, Ashley Kaiser. I teach first grade, and red, pink, and orange. She helps with children third grade at West. Oh, sorry. Oh, my. All of West's third grade teachers, I mean, we'll all be here. Now, I teach a second grade. I know you. We all move around. This past summer, we hosted a professional development opportunity for Iron Tiger staff at West. 75% of our staff made time to attend the different trainings that was held over the span of two weeks for four different sessions, a total of nine hours, of their summer break, to kind of come back and get reinvested before the school year started. Our goal was to connect responsive classroom work with the PBIS work that we've already kind of had in place. It greatly supports the work that we have already done by making kind of positive relationships with our kids, really investing in the community in our classrooms, and hoping all children feel like part of us.
So, responsive classroom actually has many components. We're not gonna go into all those components for you. Those of you who have been on the board for a while may remember that, oh, about 10 years back, the district sent many teachers over to Etcherton, and we took a week-long training. That training has become very, very expensive, so we decided to take it upon ourselves, both of us who have done the training, to train staff. And like Ashley said already, so many people were willing to come because they really feel that it's the best for our kids. So, studies have shown that children make more academic progress when they feel part of a community, feel more of a connection. And so, this year, we really determined that that was something that we wanted to make part of our goal at West, was to make sure that that community and connection was felt. It's interesting, if I listen to the other principals and everyone else, that word "community" keeps coming up over and over again. Even at, from 4 to 9, which is our age range, that's what we're trying to teach the children in the classroom, too, is our own community. And I know I often say to the kids, "Work together more this next 100, 200 days than you are with your families." And so, it's important for us to learn, everybody has different qualities that they can share with everyone else, and so we really just try to emphasize that piece. The two big components that we're working on the most right now is teacher language, and we talked a lot about how we might sound to students, along with how our faces look when we're talking to our students, and really try to be much more conscious and holding each other accountable. Not everybody always has a fantastic day, but there's always somebody at West who'll help bring you up and help you with your kids as well.
Our data sort of kind of speaks for itself this year when you look at office and discipline referrals for September and October. We had 51 office referrals last year at that time. Currently, this year, 15. So, that's kind of a big difference in, I think, the approach from the staff, as well as the team and like our kids from the work that we're doing.
So, the next slide is a quote from a first grader, very profound. "This feels like a different school from last year," and I would think that the majority of staff here would agree, that it has helped much more of that community feeling within our building as well.
I'm Dr. Robinson. I'm the literacy coach at West and East and district mentor. And we, as we can see from Caitlin, once she shared our awesome board results from last year, have some really great things in place with our curriculum and our teachers. We have a great teaching staff. We have this year started the science curriculum. Teachers are using the next generation science standards, so we have a lot of staff activities. In our fourth year of doing the Writing as a Study Leaders Workshop, and so that's a really awesome writing curriculum that we're using, and I think it's making a big impact on what the students are doing. I don't have a great child, so...
Thank you.
And then we also have a really strong balanced literacy program. I know that's something that's really been important in Milton for a long time, so we have daily five in some classrooms, or a reading workshop set up in some classrooms, and just really getting students a lot of different literacy instruction, mini lessons happening for the whole class. And then students have individualized instruction, providing reading groups, phonics, reading awareness, so a lot of really strong literacy components in place in our building. And then third grade is usually school with eight millions of that type.
And we know that academics is a large part of what we do, but in order to be future-ready, it's a lot more, we know, than just your academics. And we know that we need to support children so much in their social-emotional learning as well, too. We have a Lunch Buddy Mentor Program. We partner with UW Whitewater. We do some tutoring from some retired teachers. And then we also bring in the family component, and we had our family math night last week. That future-ready goes through into the library. We have some wonderful happenings going on partnering between our library and our classrooms this year, doing a lot, bringing in technology, but bringing in the whole system there. We have a global read-aloud where the classrooms are reading the book. Stella Diaz has something to say, but then interacting with people throughout the United States who are reading that same book, so showing that our community is much bigger than just Milton. And then we have done a whole lot with increasing our diversity in our reading materials and supporting literacy as well. And then the next slide, you can see... Did it come in the video there? Kim, is that, did it download as a video where her hand is?
No.
Oh. Well, if it did, you would have been able to see that the students from kindergarten to third grade are learning coding, and that if you, on that video, it shows what... Oh, there you go. Those second graders have programmed that Ozobot, and they've learned how to code, and they're using that to help retell a story. So, we're integrating the standards of reading along with the standards of technology, so they're learning to code, but they're also doing a story retell as they're doing that throughout the entire time. So, their voices are wonderful if people hear them. So, they're very, very engaged, wanting to learn the coding and wanting to be able to retell their story. It's much more fun to retell a story when you have something like an Ozobot running around to helping them out. So, we have a lot going on with maker spacing, coding, digital citizenship, a whole lot going on there. Also, just want to touch on our partnership with our cause, which is our parents group. Our parents group has a lot to support our education of our students. They helped purchase those Ozobots for the library, but they also help with a lot of other supplies for our classroom, different opportunities for the families, dances, book fairs, so all kinds of wonderful things with our partnership with cause.
Hi, Samantha Greedy, and I'm the administrative assistant at Milton West. I was just gonna share this because I'm a West parent also and have been for many years. There are so many great teachers and staff at Milton West. We have been so blessed with all of the teachers our two kids have had. They do such a great job of meeting the kids where they are at, both academically and emotionally. I did not write that. I have four children. They all went to West, and I agree with that 100%. But I'm actually gonna talk about the next slide. I just wanted to share that because that's pretty awesome. I'm just gonna share a little bit about our community outreach. So, we talked about community and what it is in our classrooms and what our teachers and staff are doing for our kids to make them feel like they're a part of a community. But the Milton West staff does a fabulous job of reaching outside of their walls and into the community even around. Also, we do kindness-giving baskets, and we involve the students in that, where they bring in something and sign up for something at this time of year, and then we wrap baskets and fill laundry baskets and fill them for a family in need, and we do that with some other groups in the community. And then many of our children and students participate in a pantry parade where they bring a canned good item, and they walk down to the food pantry to see what that's all about, giving back to the community. As a staff, we've signed up, and we do different meals with the Milton Perry Youth Center, trying to provide them with a hot meal. Our cafeteria is used all summer long as the summer lunch program is hosted at Motomata Park, and they use our cafeteria to prep for that during the summer. We volunteer at the gift spend shelter, and everybody really enjoys that. And then just this last week, throughout the month, our staff collected things for the Lloyd packet, and it was donations of all different kinds: toiletry items, clothing, new toys, used toys, gently-used things, household items. And then we were able to load four vehicles, three vehicles, and they were so cool, they couldn't see out the back of them. And then they took them down to packet and laid them all out there for these families to go and be able to buy a little joy for their family and get some of the things that they need. So, we're just really blessed to have such a wonderful staff that's willing to be outside of their regular things that they're doing in their classroom.
And then the improvements that are going to be made to West, we are going to be having an additional, four new classrooms, additional bathroom for both boys and girls. Yay, that's really nice. Also, some student service offices. So, if you see up there on the picture, the very left side, which is actually to the south of our building, is where the addition is going to be going. So, we're very excited for that process to begin and to end. So, thank you very much for having West here presenting for you tonight. So, as I say every morning to the students on their morning message, let's make it a great day and always follow the West way.
Be brave, be kind, and do your job.
Very good. Thank you, Marcia, and all of the West staff that joined us tonight. I know that it's not any small task to do the research and put that together, but I, for one, I hope speak for the rest of the board. We're thrilled to have you share that with us and gain a little more appreciation for all of our schools. And this is starting to feel really good. I think when we get the seven schools done, this is gonna be really something. Okay, we will move on. And number two, our presentations about our financial audit. So, I would invite Ms. Schmidt and Ms. Mang to the podium, and please reintroduce yourselves so I do not butcher anyone's name.
Your senior, everyone. My name is Koi Mong. I'm a senior founder for Long Island. And that is Kailashnay. She's a senior, too. We're both in the audit team of this audit this year. Tonight, I will go over this 2019 financial statement highlights briefly, and I have some hard topics if you would like to look at them in hard notes. So, please feel free to jump in if you have any questions during my presentation. And the first cover page is the content of audit report. It includes an independent audit report. So, in this report, we express our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements. And this year, our report is an unmodified opinion, which is the highest liability that we give to our clients. It means that financial statements present fairly in accordance with general accounting principles accepted in the United States of America. And the second part of the audit report is the management's discussion and analysis. Then followed by the government-wide financial statements, which is on page one and page two of the audit report. It includes report government, governmental and business-type activities, and it's under full or core basis of accounting. And fund financial statements has been converted to this full or core basis of accounting from the modified business. The major difference in accounting is reported on the statement of financial position, which is mainly the debt and capital assets. Debt was presented as a liability, long-term asset in the government-wide financial statements, and capital assets was reported as long-term assets in the government-wide financial statements. And debt proceeds was reported as revenue, and debt expenditures was reported as expenses in the fund financial statements. That's why it has been converted to different reports. So, the next section is the fund financial statements, which is from page three to page 11 on the audit report. It contains financial statements on individual funds, include... It contains financial statements on individual funds, include the governmental funds at the top. Let's see, next page.
Oh, you saw back in the image.
Yeah, back up, yep, here. Here we go. I'm on the one, two, three, four, the fourth one. The governmental funds measure resources available for current use. It includes the major funds, general fund, which include the special education fund and capital projects funds, and non-major funds, of course. The business-type funds is mainly the food service fund. Next section is the notes to financial statements, which is from page 12 to page 93 of the audit report, like, I mean, the full audit report. It contains summary of significant accounting policies and food notes related to significant financial statements accounts, which includes cash, debt, capital assets, WAS, and OPAPs. Next section is the required supplementary information and other supplementary information, which includes the budgetary comparison for general and special education funds, WAS schedules, OPAP schedules, and supplemental pension plan schedules. The supplementary information includes changes in activity funds and non-major fund statements. Single audit report includes schedules of federal and state wars, auditors' report on internal controls, and auditor report on compliance, and schedule of findings and question costs. In 2019 audit, there is no material weakness or significant deficiency findings noted. Some other reports that we submitted to DPI include the PF 1506, A.C. Auditor A certification. We submit that on September 11th. And the audited fund financial report, which we submitted on September 11th as well. We will submit the federal data collection form to the Federal Government House by December 31st, 2019, which is a two-day. Besides the audit report, we also issue audit matters requiring communication to the government audit, and it includes a standard communication. There's no specific discussion items to note, but there's another management letter included in that packet. And there are three points that I want to point out. The first one is the bank deposits. As of June 30, 2019, the district had 495,000 in uninsured and uncollecturized bank deposits. This month is subject to some financial risks, so I just want to bring it up to have the board be aware that there is some annual cash at the end of the year. And the second one is the food service fund operating deficit. The food service fund has reported an operating deficit of 21,144 in 2019. And the fund also reported a decrease in cash flows of 51,000 at the end of 2019. So we recommend the district to monitor operating expenses to identify any possible savings as well as consider some ways to increase revenues and improve cash flows of food service. Any questions here? Okay, next page. Page number one of this statement highlights is the general fund highlights. So it includes the total asset of general fund, which has 13 million at the end of 2019, includes cash of 8.5 million, tax receivable 3.9 million, and other assets of 985,000, which includes the prepaid expense due from other funds and due from other governments. The liability, the current liability has 3.8 million, which includes accrued payroll and related items and some accounts payable. Also, there is a short-term debt at the end of the year, which has 2.4 million. The total fund balance at the end of the year is 3.1 million, which has about 75,000 decrease from 2018. So followed by the balance sheet, there's a detail of general fund balance, which listed four different categories for the general fund. One is the non-spendable fund balance of 71,000, which is mainly the prepaid expenses. And then restricted fund balance of $42, which is the unspent common school fund balance. And then assigned fund balance of 252,000, and unassigned fund balance of 6.8 million, which can be used for the next year's operating expenses. We also do a ratio of unassigned general fund balance to subsequent year general fund budget, which comes up to 15% of next year's general fund budget, and it is very comparable to last year. Summarized income statements, we did a comparison of the budget to actual. Here, so you budgeted net decrease of fund balance of 48,000, and the actual net decrease is about 75,000, which is pretty close to what you budgeted. Next page is summarize some fund balances for some other funds, including special revenue funds and capital projects funds. We can know, we can see that the capital projects funds has fund balance of 59 million, which is mainly the debt proceeds for future capital expenditures. And debt service fund's balance of 287,000, and you close the non-referendum debt service fund, so which shows a zero balance there. And food service fund, you had a deficit of 157,000. So here, the number is from the auditor financial report, which might be different from the ones, the books of the districts, since here is used a fuller group basis of accounting, which converted some of the capital assets into balance sheet and the debt liability into a balance sheet as well. But in your book, or in the district's books, the debt proceeds would be reported as revenue and debt payment would be reported as expenses and capital assets, capital addition would be reported as spending in the infamy, but here it's reported on the long-term, as long-term asset in the balance sheet. Does that make sense? So next page is the five-year trend of the general fund and debt service expenditures. And the page four gives you a pie chart that shows the breakdown of general fund and debt service expenditures by function. So we can see that in 19, 55% of expenditures was spent on the instructions, and 56% was spent on instructions in 18, which is predictable. And 34% was spent on support services in 19, and 35% was spent on the support services in 18. Page five gives you five-year trend of general fund revenues, and page six gives you a pie chart to allocate the revenue processes into different stores. Any questions here? Okay. Next page has some tables that report each activities net cost, which is the total cost like fees generated by the activities in the intergovernmental aid. The net cost represents the amount financed by taxpayers and the general state aids. So this information was taken from page two of the audit report. Page eight was mainly the budget to actual. We only listed the ones, the expenditures which is in excess of budget of more than 10,000. So here, the capital outlay expenditures is over budget for 27,000. And the additional budget comparison detail can be found on the full audit report on pages 40 and 41. Page nine is the debt schedule. So at the end of the year 2019, you had GL debt limit of 193 million, and the outstanding GL debt you have is nearly the band, which is the 59.9 million. So you had 133 million available debt available, and which is about 69% of the debt limit. Any questions? So there's only one debt left at the end of 2019. So that's, that's all what I want to present here, just quickly to go over the audit report and some numbers. Any questions?
I have a question. On the food service fund, it was a negative 67,792 last year, and this year it's a negative Was there some big purchases of equipment or?
It's mainly.
It's on page two this year.
Yeah, on page, page two.
Right.
I kept my question till the end. This one understand it, I guess.
Yeah, it's including some of the depreciation, depreciation expenses, which does not have any cash flow for that. So if you want to know the detailed changes of the fund balances, page eight of the audit report, I think there's another, like, full audit report included in your board packet. So page eight of that audit report gives you all the detail of what has been spent, what is the total revenue is, and what is the total expenditure stayed. And here, what I have is the total operating revenue is 1 million, and the total operating expenses is 1 million. It's kind of pretty close and give you operating loss of 69,000. But it include the depreciation.
Okay, depreciation. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Which is a big amount of expenses. It is page eight, you go down. Also, depreciation is 2,000, and also salary is about 640,000.
Okay, everyone else, any questions?
And if you go down to the next page, there is a cash flow there, and you can see there are some other reconciliation items. There are some payments to benefit trust and pension expenses. Those are some kind of adjustment that may, that should be made to kind of tie out to the Wisconsin retirement system's numbers there too. So the pension expenses adjustment reconciliation item of 30,000 there, and OPAP expenses reconciliation item is 40,000 there. So those are not cash flow items.
That was quite a change from one year ago, is what I was asking.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Two, three is our recommendation update from Mr. Hoffman. Does he have anything to share?
So at my last report here, at my last board meeting, I approved the McGann's post start. The elementary school projects, I'm happy to say, now it's construction is very much underway in earnest. Progress has been very good at East with putting some Asian new wall being fast, and the crew is paired up for startup West this week. There is strong temporary access road into West in a week, one day. Putting foundation work will begin in there. So quick progress, underground utility work, footings and foundations, and soon you'll see slab on grade, followed by automation crews building the walls up. So it's good to be going. We did a cease and progress. If you've been by the buildings this week, you'll find out there's much more activity than there was in the past weeks. On the design front, at the past meeting, you approved the middle school move forward and the construction documents, and the design team is working on that and working towards our March mid-date. And then on the high school, the design development drawings are in the hands of Cullen and our estimators, and they are out working on the detailed estimate for that, and that will be presented to you at your next board meeting, January 13th. And we will be asking for your approval to move from design development into construction documents for the high school. Just one note on logistics, we will go ahead and produce our December report, which will be in your board packet for the second board meeting in the month. I know you're not having that at the end of December, so I'll talk to Kim about how that gets disseminated to you, but I want to keep consistent on that monthly board report, so please look for that as you're enjoying your time off. The other thing I wanted to report on is we touched a little bit on furniture fixtures and equipment, and how we would go about procuring that, really more than, more than just procuring it, but better defining what our needs are, whether the existing, what's existing inventory, what can be reused, what can't, where do we merge, do with old, where do we go completely new, what can we get out of the budget number that we have for furniture fixtures and equipment. And so to that end, we get produced requests for proposals from furniture vendors to help us sort of in a design assist role with market research, and ultimately being the distributing firm that rep multiple manufacturers for product and manage the installation of furniture fixtures. So those proposals will come back to us on December 20th, and in early January, we'll have a partner on the board. And I think that's following up the report.
Any questions from Mr. Huffman? Carry on. Think I'm in good mood? All right. Agenda-wise pushes us to number four, policy committee report. Mr. Westbrook.
We had a policy meeting on Wednesday, December 4th. We had a list of 15 policies that we went over. A lot of them were just minor changes, and the detailed information on each one of those policies and these changes are in your packet. And the second item on the agenda was the second reading and recommendations of the quarterly updates, including policies 3120 and 4120. If you recall, at our last board meeting, we presented 21 of them, 20 including one new one, education for employment. And again, a detailed description of those changes are in the board packet. And since this is the second reading, it's up for adoption.
Would you give us a motion to that effect, Tom?
I would be more than happy to. I'd mostly accept the policies included in the second reading for adoption. Second.
Thank you. Motion from Tom seconded by Rick to identify as a second reading and approve and adopt the policies mentioned there in the packet. Are there any questions to that effect? All in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They are adopted. Thank you. Thank you. The curriculum committee report, Ms. Karen.
Um, the curriculum committee met just prior to the start of this meeting. Um, and two of the topics that we talked about were the LADE system and, um, the human growth and development advisory group. And for more information on those, I will turn it over to Mr. Villhorn and Mr. Ruggles.
All right. Um, and I don't, Karen, I don't know if you wanted the full, the full.
Just the summary.
Yeah, the summary, yes, good idea.
Uh, what I think I shared with the, uh, curriculum committee, uh, was, uh, moved that the high school leadership team and, and, uh, the building leadership team has been reviewing. Then it's just use a class rank and the use of weighted grades. Uh, and they, in short run, as we shared in that presentation, which is in the packet, and to hand out that idea we. Uh, the use of class rank is, uh, decreasing importance for college admission. Uh, it also in some cases hurts a high school student to the mission as well. The difference between a student who has ranked tenth and ranked thirty-eight, actually their achievement in school may only be a class or two. Uh, but a class rank, it, it shows that it's a significant decrease in, in, that's a lot, that's a big difference. Uh, and so the concerns of the class rank, uh, colleges are using it as a much lower threshold or they don't use it often for, uh, class, for admission purposes. Uh, it's the data's in the packet that I gave you. Uh, but also, uh, more and more schools across the state are not even having it on the transcripts. We are actually going to be stopping with the class of twenty-twenty-two. The current freshman will be the first class that will not have the class rank actually reported on their transcript. We will still have that for purposes of, uh, there's a scholarship or a state statute requires us to have that. We'll still maintain that, but we'll not be reporting that. Uh, we also are going to be eliminating weighted grades, which is a pretty significant thing. I think if students here that are gonna, what in the world's going on here? Uh, we will be starting to share this with students and parents that we wanted to share with the board first. Uh, weighted grades, uh, we are one of the last schools actually in the conference to utilize weighted grades. And there's, and it's shared with the curriculum committee, there's a variety of reasons why, um, we want to move away from that. And to replace all of it, what I want is actually more so explaining what the LADE system is. Starting with the current freshman, uh, students, there's a list of LADE courses that are in your packet there. Students will receive points for taking LADE classes. And we really expanded that actually from the weighted system. It's not for honors classes, it's for project due way. It's also for four-year sequences in band or choir or some of the elected areas. Now, they'll receive a LADE score, a multiplier of the grade point average. And then they'll receive a LADE distinction at graduation, uh, whether it's cum laudes, main cum laudes, super cum laude. What, what this does is instead of ranking students, it allows students to compete not against each other, but with the curriculum. So at the graduation, for example, we could celebrate the class of twenty-twenty-three. We had nineteen students reach super cum laude status. Uh, we had, and, and then the next year maybe we'll have, you know, thirty-five students who reached that status. It's a way to have students compete against, again, against the curriculum, not against necessarily each other. Uh, it is a move that more and more, uh, schools are moving towards. It's also something that's much more recognized by colleges as well. So I mean, in a nutshell, I have that, there we have a draft of what that looks like. We do not have the breakdowns right now in that classroom. The team actually are working on, uh, looking at what the breakdowns would be, uh, of, of between super cum laude to point break sounds, we're taking a look at the last three years of students and what they would have scored to try to get what those are going to be. But, uh, this is, I mean, again, uh, this, why did we pick the current freshman class? Because none of them have actually taken a weighted class yet. So it's something we'd graduate, we'd move up with that.
Ryan, you look like you have questions.
I have questions.
Yes.
I want to make sure I heard the rates. I was like doing, looking and listening.
Mm-hmm.
And, which seems sometimes difficult for me. Um, did I, did I understand correctly that, um, the ranking system, um, you won't be recording the rank, uh, the students' rank, but it'll still be on their transcript?
No, it will, we will still record it. It'll still have access to it. We will not be on our regular transcript, they would issue.
Okay.
If there's a college that is requiring that class rank and there are fewer schools that do, we could be able to provide that for them.
Okay. That was one of my concerns because I know like the military academies are still asking for that. So you still have access.
It is, it is correct. It is one that still does require it. We have the ability to do that.
Okay.
But it would not be on our regular transcript. That would be, it'd have to be a special case like that. But that is exactly what.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Um, the other question I had, um, you said you're, you're kind of looking at where the breakdown is going to be between the different, um, categories there. Uh, how are you determining what that breakdown is? It, I'm assuming it's not like twen- top fifteen percent is in one section and, I mean, I'm assuming that's what we got.
No, no, we're not. We're taking a look at what, what is the total? I can show you the, the spreadsheets that we have if you'd like, but it's, it is, we're taking a look at the total number of, uh, potential points a student could achieve times a grade point average. Uh, and so the height of the grade point average for the fewer courses, it's going to be a sliding scale moving down. Um, if, if the, the highest possible score is an eighty, uh, it's going to be roughly above a sixty-five will be the, will be the breakdown for super cum laude. But again, we're wanting, if we want to overlay the last three years of class to see where that breakdown actually be.
Right, so how do you like get that sixty-five? Like if the high score is like eighty, how do you determine that sixty-five is the break-off? That's, that's the question.
What we've done is we've actually, I think we've looked at, I think Mans looked at four or five other schools where they had their grade points.
Okay.
And I forget the exact number of that, of what that is, um, as, as a starting point.
Okay. So I would assume then, from year to year, is that, would that sixty-five then move or?
You know, it's, and that's a good question. I've asked some of the other schools that have done that. Many of them after two or three years have reevaluated where those grade points are. And we have to give ourselves the flexibility to do that. But it's something we'd want to dial inferiorly soon and have to, and have to say.
Yeah. And then based on that, I would assume that from one year to next, you might have, um, a different number of, of students that would fall into the, like the, uh, cum laud section.
That's true.
Okay.
And that just reflects the differences in different classes each year.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Villhorn? Otherwise, we will transition to Ryan, I believe, for the human growth and development piece.
All right. Well, good evening. Ah. Sorry, I thought I was going to call him. Uh, so next week we will start our, uh, human growth and development advisory group. Um, and this is something that we've done before under the old state statute, but this will be our first time that we run this group under the new state statute. Uh, so based on, uh, the, the former state statute, we had to update our human growth development unit by a committee, a board committee, uh, every, uh, couple of years. And this committee could be very heavily school district personnel. Uh, and there were some folks from the, from the community, uh, but it was a district level committee. Now, there are some changes in the state statute and now we can run it as an advisory group. Uh, but also some of the, the changes within the state statute calls for a certain percentage that no group can make more than one-fifth of, of the percentage of the group. So we, uh, by that state statute, we can only have twenty percent of our team can only, can be from the school district. So, uh, Mr. Beadle from the middle school, uh, Mr. Diamond, uh, one of our health teachers and myself will be the three, uh, school district employees that are part of the group. And then we have, we have some community members, we have some parents, we have healthcare professionals, some students, and clergy as part of the group because that is part of the new state statute requirements as well. Uh, we had a team of, of, of health teachers that met over the summer, uh, that looked over the curriculum. Uh, we, we made some additions because based on the, the new state statute requirements, we noticed there were some pieces that were missing from our current curriculum. Uh, so we, we added some things in there. Uh, when we meet next week and start this process, we will, we will share the, the new state statute. We'll share the new requirements. We'll talk about the work that has been done over the summer and certainly the work that, that has been done here in Milton. Uh, and then the task of that group over, hopefully, it will be done in, in four meetings, uh, will be to then okay the changes to the human growth and development for, uh, the coming years. And then, uh, by state statute, we will have to, within another three years or so, we'll have to, uh, go through another review. Uh, but, uh, you know, we will add that into our regular innovation and design cycle just to make sure that that's part of our, of the business of looking at curriculum. Any questions?
Uh, Ryan, you said that, um, twenty percent, um, that's members of the advisory committee?
Mm-hmm.
Can be from the, um, from actual employees from the school district?
Correct.
Right? Um, are you intending to add to, um, the people that you have on this group? Because, uh, if I understand this correctly, there's three out of twelve that, um, that are from the school district, which is a thirty-three percent.
Yep. We're still waiting on confirmation from one parent and one community member on this committee. We haven't put them on the sheet until we have confirmation.
Thanks. Actually, it was, uh, twenty-five percent. Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Ryan? I don't want to cut you off. I hope you were done. Very good.
Thank you.
Very much, thank you. Okay, down to new business. Uh, discussion and possible action on the budget planning calendar for next year. We would have liked to hear from Carrie Bradley.
Hello, are you ready?
I think so.
Thank you. Uh, so you have before you, um, a planning document and it, it outlines, uh, our plans as we work to build, uh, the future year budget. It also describes what happens with the current year budget. And it outlines the steps and key information, uh, that we monitor and also use when we're working for budgets. Um, if you, as you look through the document, you will notice some highlights are that it will focus on big ticket items as far as capital outlay and then it also focuses on staffing, which is another large cost to the district. Um, there is also a deadline for current year spending so that we will be able to monitor the current year budget. Um, finally, I think, um, in working on calendars, uh, I am always reminded of the cyclical nature of budgeting. And having auditors here was, um, the, I mean, as excited as you can get about a budget calendar and timing, uh, it worked well. And, and as you're working on the calendar, you're, you're just reminded that the budget is based on the information that we have at a point in time. And information changes, needs changes, things are always changing until you thirty hits and then it turns to actual and the mental auditors spoke to you about it. So, um, do, do you have any questions?
I just had one question. It wasn't so much on, I really like this calendar. I know, I think Diane Meyer started us on this several years ago. But one, one thing, it seems like, um, we don't quite balance out at the, the end of the year, like, I mean, the beginning of the year, you know, our budget. And I know last year we were having a different business manager and different superintendent and everything. But I think we need to be really concentrate on that because if we go to add on to a referendum on that, I think the public really likes it if we have a balanced budget. You know, and that was like, it was like a cliff that off this year. And I know Peg Ekdahl, she was really a stickler on it. You know, like she'd say, like in March, we're four hundred thousand off. So what would we cut to, to make it happen? Then it'd be three hundred thousand and two hundred thousand and maybe you only have to cut fifty or a hundred thousand or something. But I think, and, and I don't know if you have to have it balanced, but I think we need to really make an effort to try to balance it, you know? I think going forward with another referendum would be a, a big positive thing to, to have it balanced.
Do you think when you talk about when you're balancing, is that what points in the process do we have to have a balance of?
And I know it's very, it's very hard where you go a thirty year before you do a budget, you know? It makes it very hard, you know? It's a.
But I understand you're focusing in the direction you're.
Right, just to try to do the best we can, you know?
No, thank you.
Do you question your friend?
Yeah, I, I want. Um, question I have is, uh, and I don't know if it's appropriate to be on this, but it, I think it might be nice to be on this, uh, since the, there's other twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty budget milestones, if you will, on here. Um, according to our board policy, there's supposed to be a regular, um, update. I have to look at the policy again, but I think it was like a monthly update. Um, and I don't know if that's, that's probably too much. It's probably quarterly, it's probably better. Where the board is provided with what the budget is, um, up to that point, what is supposed to be spent and where we are as, as far as actuals. Um, is that something that, uh, we can probably put on here? Uh, I know, uh, Rich, we had talked about that before, uh, you and I.
Yeah, you can, you can bring, uh, updates on where we are year-to-date. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, you, year-to-date expenditure and, and what was actual, what the plan was. Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, we can bring those comparisons. I don't know that it, that it makes a lot of sense to do that monthly, but maybe a quarterly update on that, especially now that we have a full-time director of business services on staff.
Yeah, I think our policy says monthly, but I agree that's probably a little too much, too frequent, but.
The policy says monthly, then we should do it monthly or change the policy.
Yeah, I would probably change the policy.
We check that out.
You know, be the right thing. Um, but then it's just a matter of when is that quarter date? But I, I think we could probably just, like, we could take that offline too and discuss that. But I, at least I wanted to bring it, um, to your attention and see if we can't get it down to calendar.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept this, um, plan for budget.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Mike, to approve the twenty-twenty-one budget planning calendar as presented. So no further questions, all in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a calendar. Thank you, Perry.
Thank you.
Okay, action on twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, open enrollment alternative applications. Ms. Kim.
Uh, we just have two applications this month. One, um, applying to Milton and one applying out.
One in, one out?
Yep, one in, one.
I'll make a motion to accept the open enrollment alternative application report. I'll second.
Thank you. Motion from Tom, seconded by Mike, to accept the, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, open enrollment alternative application as you heard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They are approved. miscellaneous staffing report.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented.
Second.
Uh, it's in your board packet, of course. Uh, motion from Diamond, seconded by Tom, to approve the staffing report that you have. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done with staffing report. Action on gifts and donations.
I'll make a motion to accept the thirty-five hundred and twenty-five dollars that was given to the school district with gratitude. Second.
Thank you. Motion from Mike, seconded by Rick, to accept with gratitude, as always, the donations that our wonderful community provides to the school district in the amount of thirty-five hundred and twenty-five dollars. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our donations are accepted. Thank you, folks. Meeting dates. Mr. Diamond, what do you know?
There are a couple of things coming up on, uh, December eleventh, which is Wednesday this week. We had a celebration at Consolidated Elementary School for Consolidated, uh, Dean, uh, Ernie. I guess it is being named as Ernie, the highest report card scorer in the state of Wisconsin for the third year in a row. Congratulations to, uh, the students, staff, parents at Consolidated. And we're going to have a celebration there at eight forty-five on December eleventh at Consolidated Elementary School. On December seventeenth, we have a HR committee meeting at eight AM in the district office. And then we come back after, uh, the new year. On January sixth, uh, special board meeting at six thirty in the district office. On January thirteenth, a regular school boarding meeting at six thirty in the Milton High School library. And on January fifteenth, a policy committee meeting at five PM in the district office. We also have coming up in January, uh, the state education convention. So we need, uh, board members to get in touch with Kim to let them know that they are planning to attend and what their status is for, for that conference. And, uh, if you want more information on that, you can get in touch with Kim, which you can provide more of the details. So nothing, though, that we need to schedule as a group.
Very good. Sounds like we need to watch our emails, keep up to date on all the details.
Yep.
Uh, anything else? Seeing none, I'd like to go watch the basketball game, so hopefully get out of here.
I make a motion.
I do.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Happy holidays, everybody. Happy holidays, everybody.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out, what the manager means, we're starting to get you well-trained.